Okay. I promise me to order more call needs. Uh. Mr. Abrams.
Yeah.
Mrs. Brockman.
Here.
Mr. Cammerer. Mrs. Conville.
Here.
Mr. Snell. Mrs. Wheeler. Dr. Walker. Here, please rise and join me. Liberty and Justice Room. Are there any questions regarding the senior agenda? I'm not taking motion.
Who will be agenda approved just presented?
Question by Mr. Carter said, why did you took the foodie to just present? Oppose? Good to see you in the vision of the American community school district to provide advice I can have to carry through the programs in the state. Now it's some things, but in all things that your subjects, but. Uh, we don't really have any guests anything, so um I'm not gonna ask for any. Others than I know, uh, so I will keep going first, uh, Mr. Cammerer.
Uh, I just thought I'd start with the thanks Sam Rockman, Sparken, and Sparken Assembly for inviting us out to the homecoming parade. We have been through it once, we have a sorry because we were. A freak with our kid. Finish the other options agree, so that's it, thank you.
Um, I would echo Director Piano Shers, um. Um, I feel like homecoming as a whole went on very well, thank you to. Our um Spartan Assembly group, the advisors who teach, you know, everyone within the schools, some artists makes. Uh, wonderful sound, uh, awesome football game, great dance. Uh, just a whole community effort and uh, of course, the carnival after parade. Um, was again another success, so um, we should all feel great and pleasant. The uh, the homecoming festivities.
Here. Thank you. Uh, Mrs. Wheeler.
Yeah, I um have three quick things, one is I wanted to congratulate Riverdale Heights for winning the. Benton Republic Library Summer Reading Program, I don't know if that was publicized a lot or not, but. It's a really big deal, our librarians, our music really helped to coordinate and kind of push that effort all summer with our kids and. They were very excited, they got to have a special assembly to announce that, so wanna congratulate our kids. Um, I also wanted to thank Spartan Assembly for a great carnival, I spoke with my family there, they had a wonderful time, it's just so fun for them to see all the. Older kids running around having fun and to see that community within our school district. And um, as a sixth grade parent, I think sixth grade staff, teachers, uh, for the sixth grade camp, obviously had a wonderful time.
Thank you.
Cheers.
Hi.
Ms. Conville.
I hear what everyone has said, also I wanna thank Molly Brockman because the float was decorated so nicely and she really. Helped to coordinate having that spot for us and um, she even drove it home. So um, thank you for that.
Thank you.
Oh, uh, thanks for the float that we had, thank you Brian for getting this into the accident. Love to see it all, but um, and we were at a great time, so and the festival was great um afterwards. And I mean, the food trucks seem to be ahead, especially the pizza one, there was a nice line for that, so hopefully next year we'll continue to bring more food items to happen. Be um, appreciate, but I really appreciate that.
I also wanted everybody to remember that today is Indigenous Peoples' Day, just wanted to read a little bit about um what that is because. It's it's been fairly new and coming to the forefront, I think it was important just to remember what it represents, so today's Indigenous Peoples' Day. It's a time to recognize the history, culture, and contributions Indigenous communities across the world. For far too long, the stories and voices of Indigenous people have been largely overlooked, but today we affirm. We reaffirm our commitment to listening, learning, and standing in solidarity. Indigenous cultures are rich with wisdom, strength, and resilience, despite centuries of oppression, they have not only survived, they continue to thrive. Offering vital insights into environmental stewardship, community, and justice. And let's also remember that the land we stand on today is part of a long history of Indigenous sovereignty and connection to the earth. This day is certainly not just about reflection, but actually let us commit to learning the true history of these lands, advocating. For Indigenous rights and supporting the preservation of Indigenous languages, traditions, and communities. Together, we can honor the past while building a future rooted in respect, equity, and shared humanity. So I just wanted to um have a remember that that's what today represents, and that was really, I really, I came across it really important just to remember that. Um, so moving on, Mr. Carter. Okay, um. Is that really good? Okay, um.
Mr. I'm gonna say I have some sadness to share, I condolences go to two former employees and their families. Uh, specifically the Charleston family, uh Julie Charleston and her family, she really was a current educator in various capacities. Their son recently graduated from Pleasant Valley Community School District. Then former Pleasant View first grade teacher, Paul Schreiber. Uh, classroom has laid his family's deep roots in our community, pack continued volunteer Pleasant View. Um, funding her her retirement, and so our condolences go without some prayers to. Uh, those families. Very much. That's good.
Um, the first thing I have to share tonight is actually for Mrs. Kenyon in her absence. Um, the Special Education Department held a community outreach event for our families, including siblings of students on I E Ps on Thursday. October tenth. Um, the Special Education Department worked in conjunction with the Bentonhurst Family Museum and sponsored Family Flight Night. We had seventeen families attend, and the families had a blast making rockets to launch, making hot air balloons and other interactive activities related to flight. Mrs. Kenyon presented a brief overview toward the end of the evening on the Achieve Family Portal, and that the state of Iowa will be rolling out some time this fall. The Achieve Family Portal will allow families and students on I E Ps to see progress reports. Um, and other data measures within the system. In real time online. We will be guiding our families through access to this new feature throughout the school year. Um, she did pass along some pictures that I will forward it to Heather so she can take a look, um. And she wanted to give a huge shout out to the following people. Dante Dunn for organizing and planning the event, Christina Maya for making this an option for service learning for our high school students. And of course, the Bentonhurst Family Museum. We did have fifteen students volunteer at the event, who were integral in making the event. She being for a few, thank you especially to all the families who attended. I have a few other announcements of my own, um, at the last board meeting, we recognized several of our national heroes on the list. Um, I also wanted to take the opportunity to recognize three of our students who achieved the commended status. And that is Victoria Rice, Perna Venka, and Reid Yoder. Uh, some exciting news, on October seventh, the Iowa High School Athletic Directors Association. Announced that Colin Wickin, our very own um assistant, or sorry, dean of students and athletic director at the junior high. Was named the twenty-four, twenty-five Southeast District Middle School Activities Director of the Year. This prestigious award was given by uh the Iowa High School Athletic Directors Association. And was earned through the recognition and support of his peers within the district. Colin will now be in the running for the twenty-four, twenty-five Iowa Middle School Athletic Director of the Year Award, which will be decided in December. And he will compete against winners from the five districts across the state. So congratulations to you. And last but not least, but equally exciting, we had fifteen cheerleaders who went to Austerchild for the Iowa All-State Cheerleading Squad. We will begin, there were two hundred cheerleaders that tried out. Um, thirty cheerleaders were selected and of the thirty, four of them were Pleasant Valley cheerleaders. Uh, Sunday, our squad competed in the cheerleading competition of the season, the Triton Challenge Crosstown. They competed in four A cheer dance and four A group stunt. Stunt Group A received first place and stunt Group B received third place. And the whole squad received the first place in four A cheer dance, and they were named the grand champions for the competition. There's a lot of eligible athletes. Most impressive and very exciting for the district is that um. That you received the sportsmanship award as well, so we're proud of the girls.
Great. Thank you very much for going back. And we're gonna move on to. We'll pause you if you were sorry.
Sitting in this evening and being at the table for us as Debbie's recovery proceeded that she had before speedy recovery for her. Uh, I said, I do wanna reach out and just share that um Mary, Gary Altman, longtime social studies teacher, women's basketball coach for us. Passed away here um earlier this month, October, he was living down in Texas where one of his daughters lived as well. And October twenty-seventh, twelve thirty, I believe it's a Sunday, we'll be having a celebration of life in Bentonhurst High School. In the gymnasium there for him, that's where he was a teacher, a longtime coach prior to coming to Pleasant Valley, so. Keeping him and his entire family, he has one daughter that lives here in town still, um, just keeping having thoughts of hers.
Alright, now to move on to the senior agenda, are there any questions this evening on this senior's competitive agenda? Motion by Mr. Harris, I'm gonna Mr. Matt, please comment, please, please, then the agenda, ask for them in all favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion, Ms. Conville, second one, Mr. Harris, the general report, speaking of payment of voices presented, are there any questions? Oppose? Nutrition Fund.
I move that nutrition fund warrants be issued in a total amount of one hundred thirty-two thousand eight hundred and twenty-two dollars and eighty-five cents in payment of invoices presented.
Okay.
Motion by Ms. Brockman, I'm gonna Mr. Cammerer, let the nutrition fund warrants be issued in payment of voices presented, are there any question? All favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? I would like the Junior High Activity Fund.
I would like the elementary, the higher level, the awards be issued in a total amount of eight thousand three hundred and twenty dollars and.
Motion by Mr. Harris, second one, Ms. Conville, the younger activity fund warrants, speaking of payment of voices presented.
Yeah.
Um. Uh, are there any questions? All favor say aye. Oppose? High School Activity Fund.
High School Activities Fund, warrants be issued in a total amount of three-five thousand five-hundred. And six cents in payment and invoices presented.
Second.
Motion by Miss, second by Mr. Harris, the High School Activity Fund Warrants, speaking of payment of voices presented, are there any questions? All favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Manson Fund.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Harris, I'm gonna Mr. Madison Fund Warrants, speaking of payment of voices presented, are there any questions? All favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose?
Capital Projects Fund. I move the capital project fund warrants be issued in a total amount of three-five hundred twenty-nine thousand nine hundred and eighty-three dollars and sixty-nine cents in payment of invoices presented.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Conville, second by Ms. Brockman, that the capital project fund warrants be issued in payment of voices presented, are there any questions? All favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Capital Physical Plant and Equipment Levy Fund.
I move the capital fund warrants be issued in a total amount of two-hundred-and-twenty-thousand-one-hundred-and-twenty-two dollars and. Payment of invoices presented.
Okay.
Motion by Ms. Conville, second one, Mr. Harris, capital fund warrants be issued in payment of voices presented, any questions? All favor say aye. Oppose? And Service Fund.
I would like that service funds warrants be issued in a total of ninety-one thousand nine hundred and ninety-two dollars and forty cents in payment of invoices presented.
Okay.
Motion by Mr. Harris, second one, Mr. Cammerer, and the debt service fund warrants be issued in payment of invoices presented, any questions? All favor say aye. Oppose? Internal Service Funds.
I move that internal service funds from sixteen-six thirteen through sixty-six sixteen, and A C H from thirty-two thirty-two through. Be issued in a total amount of five-hundred-and-twelve-thousand-four-hundred dollars and ninety-eight cents in payment of invoices.
Motion by Ms. Brockman, second Miss Conville, that the internal service fund warrants sixty-six thirteen to sixty-six sixteen, and A C H thirty-three two three. Thirty-six be issued and the payment of invoices presented, are there any question? All favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose?
Finally, transfer. I would like to transfer warrants be issued in a total amount of two-thousand-three-hundred-twenty-six dollars and nineteen cents in payment of invoices presented.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Harris, I'm gonna Mr. Madison Fund Warrants be issued in payment of uh, of voices presented. Um. Any question? All favor. Aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Alright, now moving on to all business enrollment updates.
Okay, to kind of walk us through um, this thing called this spreadsheet, this super small array. Heather is gracious and put this together for us, um, maybe we'll come back, we got the screen right now. It's on the favor screen, on the screen right now, what you would see would be just definitions that help us understand what your total enrollment is. Our students in seats, or as dark school can say, our butts in seats, I mean, because they're actually in our seats at school. And then our certified number, which is the number that we actually use when it comes to um, school funding, that's the number that we'll focus on there, so. With that, let's go to the next screen. Remember October first was our uh enrollment numbers, where we look at when we start. Uh, tomorrow, the fifteenth is actually the final, final day whenever it's turning to the state, so it gets more clarity. After today, we should be really pretty close. I wanna start with the on the screen right now, what you see is where we were a year ago, in the first column, and the second column we would be our pull points. As our kids aged up one year, so thank you to our kindergarten classes, three seventy-four is now three seventy-four, so we'd increase by ten. So if you go down overall, you would see we are up sixty-nine students in seats from where we were a year ago. Now, what you wanna notice there is our twelfth grade class last year was four oh five. And the very bottom of that column, where it blue is there, you can see our kindergarten is three fifty-two. So mathematically, that's twenty-two or twenty plus five, so thirty-three difference in just kids. Coming, going from where we were last year. So. With that said, let's go to the next one. And start, we always track different things in this one, we talked about previously, open enrollment in and out. You can see for about the pandemic now, right, we open enrollment right now, we are at forty-seven. Um, they're this year open rolling into Pleasant Valley. And two eighty-one outs, so there was a positive difference of one twenty-six. You can see back to twenty eighteen, nineteen, once we had the largest difference of a hundred and thirty-one to the negative. So we're absolutely now on the plus side last, the last two years being our, there's just one. When we look at these numbers, next slide, you see us going to Bentonhurst and Davenport, which is where we typically see the largest numbers of our open enrollments. Again, this year, North Scott's pretty stable, but we've had about ten or so that opened enrollment, will do our community out as well. So in Bentonhurst this year, you can see last year we were at negative twenty-four, so we had twenty-four more students going. To Bentonhurst and coming into Pleasant Valley, this year, we are at twenty. Twenty-six to twenty-eight, so it's twenty-six uh, more on the positive side this year. Davenport continues with the trend where we had last year, we're in ninety-seven, last year, one three five. So we picked up a few more students at open enrollment in there as well, so that is where you see our positives happening. At our last board meeting, or two board meetings ago, um. James Smith asked us, where do we have the special education, so we added this one in. You can see that independently, last year we had ninety students, this year we have seventy-five students who are open enrolled into Pleasant Valley in special education. So you can see the total percent of that would be in our open enrollment numbers. Moving out, Pleasant Valley fourteen out, so that's four point nine eight percent of our special education. That are open enrolled in there at that point, so. Um, sometimes we need to see an opening, and sometimes students will come to us not with an I E P, but then they will receive one when they are with us. Um, sometimes we have seen, we've noticed in some families might be with us with an I E P or a higher low I E P, move out of the district. But then stay with us because continuation, but now they won't enroll back into us, so we'll see some of those things too. So it is definitely continue to watch. Old schooling, look at the ten year totals here, you can see since the pandemic was where we were the highest in that. One twenty-six when I came out of the pandemic, but like, um, now we're down to eighty-one. So we've seen a decrease there, the number of students, but again, typically see elementary, the junior high, and high school. Elementary is always the highest, most tend to come back, it's junior high, high school typically. Um, with that eighty-one could be interesting to watch and see. Is there's a lot more school choice in the area, so maybe some more homeschooling ones maybe not coming back to us, it could be, so that'd be another choice too. And then open enrollment, we watched this one as well, Cam and Clay Ridge are two online programs that people can open their roll to. And you can see we have seventeen and four right now, um, as of this time. And what the legislation, the legislation that we're looking at will be, they put a March first deadline on open enrollment. To an online program, right now there is not a deadline, so students can choose that, um, I can see that potentially coming through at legislative time. So next slide. Next slide's one. This is the last we have. Okay. Uh, let's see. Right through this, thank you. Um, this one here, what this shows is all the cause of the definitions. So any of this, the certified number, that's forty-five thousand four-hundred-and-eighty-two point five three. You can see we are down from last year forty-five point three five students. Um, and again, that is because of that fifty-three really that we saw in kindergarten and seniors, the difference there, that's a big chunk of it. Large class moving out, smaller class coming in. The next one over is the access students in seats, again, because of open enrollment. Now being a positive, that would said right now, we are at a minus one difference from last year. And then the other one really is total of all the students in our. District that are somewhere or go somewhere, if not just to Pleasant Valley, plus it's preschool, there's a lot, and that's why I think there's always a large. Um, just that we report to the state, but really the things for us is the certified students in seats. Um, so we look at the money that we'll get from the state this year. Coming from the state will be less than what we've received in the past. Now, some of that is made up because open enrollment money does follow students, most of it does, so look at that. But when it comes to balancing budgets, we're always very careful, because when you have open enrollment students, someone doesn't notice that overall next year. That money's not there, so we're very cautious budgetarily speaking when it comes to that number. Questions on the comment has on today?
Or else if you open the vault to other district. If all the areas you wanna return to the district in which you live, you have to open it back to it, or do you automatically get back?
Automatically, I mean, basically you do that, and then you, and you're open rolling in that district, then.
Yeah.
Yeah, so when you look at it, or there are a lot of. Uh, or it's make of school choice, you know, Lawrence, for example, will open up, I joined our, I believe should be open next fall, but it's all ready to go. So we've talked a little bit, because they'll also have four-year preschool, which will be in our district for next year, so we'll partner with them, the four preschool. Uh, and then you would have. Yeah, so we have students who go to Morning Star, we have families that go to Courtney, or we have families that go to the new. Church, I believe they have a program there on Battle Road as well. Um, there's a couple. Uh, academies that are gonna be opening up, one is open up already, so we just need to watch it, there's lots of options for kids, so. Tracking all of our neighbors.
Are you gonna send this out to us?
I sure can. Yeah. Yeah, we can do one or two things, we can. We can add this to that to our point that, there's if we give all that to you, I can either read that way. To all of you. Are we able to track, um? Yes, so what I didn't give you yet, which will follow is. Um. After today or tomorrow, there's a document in the state website that shows us how many. Private schools or non-private schools receive students from us, so we look at that, and they are. Morning Star, Lawrence, Princess Peace, Assumption, All Saints, Catholic, Saint Paul, Apostle, John Kennedy. Trinity Lutheran, I think Courtney, or God, because they're not credited, I think this year, maybe a part of that number. And it'll also show us how many E S As are associated with each of those schools as well. So last year was all kindergartners. So now we first gravers this year, we receiving E S As, well, kindergartners this year, and anyone who is falling below that. Income threshold, and I think that's the next thing that opens up to most everybody. Following here, so we'll continue to track the E S As are impacted also, because with the E S A. Then that that is following that student for that school, we get a certain amount, correct, a thousand bucks or something?
Yes.
Okay, exactly, so we would have to know that number to make sure that you're applying for that.
Yes.
Great, question.
Great, anything else on this? Alright, there's no motion required, so moving on to new business, uh, board policy updates, and there are a lot of board policy updates.
There are, so. And I will go through these tonight, uh. It's kind of an update, Leanne's gone through the one hundred series and made a few updates, so we've lived. A year ago, almost to the day, we just changed this. A year ago, almost to the day, we just changed this, but then ISB also came out with all the new Title IX. Policy to promote, which we did not have before, so she's going through those tonight too. And then I'll go through the five hundred series, which for the most part is. Current absenteeism, things of that nature that are less than it changes, so we'll talk about those tonight too. Um, and then what we're also trying to do is. If you're looking at ISB, they have a new nine hundred series, nine, nine different series, and the board policies, we have ten. And so when new policies are brought up, it's very difficult for sometimes for us to track our number to ISB's number. So one thing we're also trying to do, which you'll see in the five hundred series, we are trying to. Realign any new policies that ISB brings out in the same number system in ours. And we're doing the same thing in the one hundred moving forward, so we're each other, we're all done. Our policy to match ISB. And then our ultimate goal is it'll be put into a system. That you guys will be able to access, it'll be on our website, so it's actually a program, no management person just the way we have it right now, so it'll be a much easier system. We're just taking a little bit of time to transition into it. So we have to go from ten to nine then? That's our goal, okay, yes. Yep, so we're working to that group in that path right now, because really, if you look at it. Basically, you know, our fours, fives, sixes, sevens, eights and tens. Are all kind of scattered compared to ISB's. With that, Leanne, you want to take one hundred series?
Sure, um, first, um, yeah, our policy is given an update and it's one oh one. Um, the two paragraphs at the top is to have a direct account in ISB policy. So when we, when we move forward and press, press within some changes, we're, we're using the same language, sure that we have that. Um, there's nothing in here that, uh, really jumps out in the belief that we need to discuss, it's more just getting in. Need to form the ISB policy. Um, the second one is board policy one oh two. And part of not only us, we, the, um, the board policy numbers, it's also the titles of the policy. So they're reflecting the whole thing ISB has. So this one, again, it's just taking out affirmative action, action, because this is. Um, educational opportunity, not employment opportunity, so that doesn't apply to this policy. Um, adding language into the paragraph that we didn't have, the entity coordinator updating the contact to myself. And then also adding the last paragraph, which is the requirement to have the school rights commission information. And if somebody chooses to contact them, instead of coming directly to the, to the school, uh, or to the district. Or any issues that they may have, so those are just the requirements, and again, just getting us along with ISB policies. Uh, board policy one oh three, uh, on range needs assessment, um. Everything here is in, uh, because this is a new policy for us. Uh, so this is one that I deeply find you have one.
Actually, the top part is all the same, it's the bold face down below.
Is that what you did?
Yep, yep.
Yes, sorry, uh, this one, Brian, I believe you had one, your list, uh, things that need to accomplish for. Something coming, right?
Uh, yes, well, correct, this is the one that we had to turn into the state for the. Desk audit that we do every year, December fifteenth. This is one of the policies that they're asking for, we already have it, we're just updating with some new verbiage. Thank you.
There's something important to talk to you about, remember, um, so board policy one oh four R one. This is our intent, we're asking an investigation procedure, uh, it looks like a lot when you see all this pen and paint. But really, we were just moving this, that aligns with the ISB policy, so that it flows correctly. Uh, in bullets, I did add some additional language for clarification to show that if somebody is coming forward. That we are, um, giving them examples of what information they need to be looking for. The other big change I would say is it's that comparison going from. Found people within a hundred and eighty days to fifty-five within thirty days. With some of this, we technically collecting information. And waiting six months to try to get people witnesses to, to remember these events. Could be a very difficult process, it's not saying have to thirty, but. That's really an appropriate amount of time for us to be able to talk to the people we need to make sure they still be in the district. Just getting us a little more aligned with what is in a typical investigation process, um, so. Outside of that, everything else is completely, um, same with the law policy. Um, the one oh six series, it is new for us. But it is, it isn't new technically, so this was that. Title IX twenty twenty versus Title IX twenty twenty-four, we really hadn't adopted a lot of this because. Twenty twenty-two changes happened, so it happened in twenty twenty, right? There's just a lot of things that happened, and then when twenty twenty-four came out, everything was kind of gone past. Once we, Iowa litigation, that rule was upheld, we now need to implement the twenty-two twenty, which questions are. So this is coming directly from ISB, or yes, ISB, um, updating just the information contact. There is a additional paragraph that I added into our policy that I had previously because ISB had that. And I felt it was important verbiage that we need to make sure that we had in first as well, so we are compliant with that one those six. And then again, these are all just. Current policies that ISB and we have that we need to approve to be able to post on the website, to be compliant with. Title IX twenty twenty, twenty twenty regulations.
Let's pause, yeah, let's pause there, just to question the one hundred series before we look at the five hundred.
The second paragraph. Um, there are a couple things, I'm not sure if I can care for the phrase enough, so I'm trying to hit that section out. I'll probably have to write something by email, whose recommendation is all, first of all, but. Um, to encourage students. The board endeavors in the dedication of school district resources to encourage students to come to school district on a variety of backgrounds. Slip forward to the time that we'll have jobs, homes, families, places in, in the school district community. And it's a recognition of individuals, there are like, two things that popped up to me, one is. The use of the word and means that, like, this is the ultimate goal for every student, which doesn't actually make sense, some things may not actually make sense. And the second thing that popped up to me was recognition of these individuals to me, even students starting schools, and I was thinking, they were like. Productive members, that were sitting right here. That was more along the lines of, I was thinking was probably intended there.
So give, give you the first one again that you mentioned.
Yeah, so, um, I actually simplified it to say. Instead of, uh, to look forward to the time that we'll have a little, a lot, to look forward to the time when we become mature, productive members of society. Send it to me, I'll share with the board, but I have a little visual by copy, so you can do what I'm suggesting, we'll get off to the next one.
Okay, that'd be great, thank you. Uh, we'll have one more reading unless it's a brand new one, which is the one oh six, it'll also be three.
I have question one oh three, so at the end of one oh three. In bold, um, it says here that this is about the board committees. Uh, well, about the superintendent, we're bringing up the board about the means used to keep the community informed, so. Um, and then as we're going with the board committees work, the board will determine major educational needs and rank them in priority order. To build on range goals and plans to be destination, establish and implement short-term objectives, reach plans to meet the goals and to attain the desirable goals of student performance. And, and it talks about, um, you have to plan, um. Should include, and that has to be reported to the, uh, Department of Education, correct? So, um, what would we be doing then?
So lots of vague reporters, which we do every, each September. We bring that to all of you to see that which means our goals is that, and the other one would be, for example, the players.
Good.
But that has us to rank them in priority order, I mean, did we do that already?
We were not at this time. So we, we'll have to, I would have to have a meeting about that for the, for our current standpoint.
Yeah, cuz that really goes down to our five-year, um, plan that we put together in our sign.
Right. Yeah, so I just wanna know that we have it in there, so we'll just move that issue that we implemented properly, so that we. Uh, with policy that we. Right now, I'm, I'm working on a priority list, we have not.
Let's review that, think through that one.
Okay, that'll be good. So make sure we're right there, minds with it. That was my big question, big question.
I don't know if we just take out and rank them in priority order, I mean, we just.
I don't know if that was kept correct by ISB or not, and if we have to do that, do we have to try just not take out the priority part?
You can, I would, we, we can tell us what, like, we just mandated versus optional, so. As an option, like, we can just, we can go from the wise to figure out how, how to answer that person.
Any questions?
Any other questions?
If not, then we can end the five minutes here. Okay, so we go to the five minutes here, the first thing you see is the table of times, it kind of talks about the area, and in terms, you know, how we're adjusting some of our titles. They pass in line with those. And again, overall, we're going through its compulsory attendance, and it's open enrollment, March first changes there, so. When you look at the first one, again, I use the red and the black, so any of the blacks that we currently have. And then what's in red is just the new verbiage, really for the most part. Grounding to the bullet points, all of the bullet points that are listed there are the new exemptions for product absenteeism. So those are what, by law, that's what now exempts you, um, from an absence or. In school, so it talks about a hundred and eighty days, a hundred thousand, one thousand eighty hours. Exempt, be those situations there. The next one, admissions. On this one here, we're talking about kindergarten ages, first grade ages, and then using a birth certificate. Uh, for achieving someone's age or entering into school. Again, the red is just very similar information, just in paragraph form. And the key thing here is remember that we can look at a birth certificate, we can't keep the birth certificate. That we cannot have, or we can also use organization to see what can use if birth certificate's not available. The next one was the attendance center assignments. Again, you can see the very short paragraph that we have. I think the biggest thing would be that the second paragraph was that it's responsive, superintendent, big recommendation record. We can just see different things that we look at when it comes to our attendance centers for each of our schools, how we determine what they're going to be. The next one is new, but actually it's a practice that we have here in the district. Uh, and this really talks about if you have two siblings and a parent wants that they're twins, and they want to help with the same classroom. We can work through the parents and make them happy. Uh, but if something where like transpired throughout the year where it's not working well. The administration can't come back and say the parents, we've been very challenging, we're separated. Uh, so that's what we do now, this is written there. It'd be the same thing, we could all be in the same classroom and. Get over there. You do occasionally have, but most times, most parents, maybe their first year in kindergarten, want them together. But typically, we start to see them separating some other one day. Next one, student attendance records. Again, this is really straightforward, we just have one paragraph, this just puts into two, it just talks about how the principals take care of me. Fourth secondary is listed as the custodian of the school records, just because they will receive all final records, that's listed there. Versus we had central office in ours. The next one, this is current absentee and truancy. When you look, I just put a paragraph instead of listing our building policies. We get one that was also religious holidays, students' absences are excused, and also truancy unexcused. It really gets rid of those three, puts it all into one. Uh, again, you can see how walking through the process of talking about absenteeism, being at ten percent. Or nine days in a semester, that's when parents are gonna start getting their letters. And the twenty percent is when they're at eighteen days, and that is considered truant at that point. And you can see all the exemptions listed there. The next one that's in black, we are keeping in place there, we give that to your minds in that first education case. Uh, we cannot put them in supervised study hall or in school suspension unless we provide immediate needs. And then the last probably listed here is, in this policy. ISB really wrote this policy more towards a secondary lens, and that's the one they did that. So it makes more sense to put this, we were reflecting our student handbook at each level, um, cuz there will be some differences. You know, for example, at the elementary level, if you miss five periods of class, you're not gonna drop, so. Three, what if you miss five periods of geography class that are unexcused, you could potentially drop from your high school course, you know, some of those things, so. That'll be in our regulations there, our parent student handbook. The next one is just the regulations, again, this is talking about to go through. Talks about the process of the use of product absenteeism in the school engagement meeting, which takes place in parents at fifteen percent or thirteen days. We'll bring the families in to have a conversation about their attendance. We write the prevention plan during that meeting, and then also if there's disciplinary action potentially. If a student is missing so many days, we can turn with insurance or any discipline policies. And again, we're in our notebooks. The next one here is resident students. Again, you can see all of one short paragraph that we have, again, really working through on this one here. I bring your attention to the last, second paragraph, the last sentence, further students says. Further students have reached the age of majority who are still eligible to attain high school, recommend to clearly residency. Independent for the residency of their parent, just means that, again, they can stay in our district and, um. As a resident, you know, their parents being away. The next one. Is admissions, you can see kind of what we did. Future, we had different sections, future former headships, and other known residents. Everything is exactly the same. What I would share with the idea of a question to ask about you, and it's in the last paragraph. Want to use some history on this one here. What you see in red is really one thing that we currently do. Says nine resident students who are eligible to attend Ivy School and we have evidence they'll be legally residents of the school if they're part of tour one. May be allowed to attend without payment of tuition. To me, if a family came into us on September fifteenth and said, we have bought a house. Use our command track, all those things, we will let them enroll, and they would have to pay tuition. Okay, if they're getting residents of ours. A thing that we have done for years, and it really goes to the back of. If a family comes in new class in November, so it's after October first. They show us their contract, your house is gonna be done really soon. By that definition, it's after October first, they need to pay tuition. We've always operated, what you see in the black here is that. We will let them go one semester tuition free. Another thing, we know it's coming, and it's gonna happen, and they're gonna be here, we don't charge you tuition. Just because of fluidity of what we have in our district and powers being built. I guess the question, are you guys okay with keeping that in there? Versus just saying it had to be before October first, when you have one semester and it's not done or they're not moved in, that they pay tuition for that.
So many times, it's not finished, or I'm not actually living the district.
No, I mean, usually it's just, it's just a way for it to get done. I mean, we usually have that bill of sale, it's pretty much moving forward. And this actually happens maybe a couple times a year, where we say to them, yeah, we understand, it's coming, it'll be done, or it gets delayed. So, we're always operating with that idea.
But it's not happy to have people.
No, because again. Usually they're gonna be here, and then the second one, they're gonna be here in the next year. It's how it's gonna be. They would from the fun of the year, not the first year. Yeah. They're not resident yet, so we give them one semester tuition free.
So just make sure, oh, this is a state, it's giving us some money for the student either.
That'd be interesting, correct? Yeah.
And with the way. And with the way property taxes work. Usually when you build a house, you may have to tap that the full tax will be paid, so like a year or two later, a year and a half later, right?
Yes.
So even then, that even when they are here, we're not getting the full tax. And space, so like. So essentially, it's in that situation, you know, for that student, you probably get that money response to from them, and I plan to come from. If we would give a certain amount of the thing, that um resident may not be anything until.
You know, it may happen once or twice, I mean, it's pretty frequent. Think about it. So, wanna let you know, that's one that we. The student transfer end, really that first paragraph is a recap of the first student set more concise. So nothing there. Student transfer out, we did not manage this or withdraw since the brand policy. Really, there's nothing to do, it's the way it's what we also do, is you have a support policy from I S B that talks about it, so. The process we use if there's students leaving, that's how we hit records to the school. The next one here, transfer proceeds, this is sending this, this is what we just do, you know, if you're here now, the March first deadline. The two paragraphs seem really much cleaner. And the one thing in the, which I'll point out. On the second page, we have in black right now, there's one sentence that's hard to see, but it's right in the second paragraph. The board not approve students request to allow receiving district to enter disclosure for purposes of transportation. So on open enrollment, we do not go into Beddorf and get kids. Does not commit to us to get kids, so we are all ready to jump in there. And the next one is receiving district. This is new, and I pointed out in the second, first red line. That this reserves the right to deny continued enrollment to any student who meets the definition of truancy or truant. So that's brand new this year, so if a student is open enrollment to us, to become truant. We can deny their enrollment instead of fact, we can. Do not stay with us, only for truancy.
That's like only for them.
Correct, yes, no other reason, no discipline, and then we cannot. And then, just you guys are aware, if someone were to ask me the other big red sentence here, that was students in grades nine to twelve, they're rolling to a varsity level sports. And why everything is crossed up below is because that law just needed changing, and there's so many things that have been added to it now. So it's a certain app in the court, it's bad going along. We just go into law versus trying to update this policy or have something change to open enrollment. Dangerous weapons, there's really nothing here by some furbage, um you see the red and just cross outs. The policy did not change, the one that we did, I suggest taking, obviously just never comes up, is the last paragraph. I S B does not have it in there, we have in ours. It just talks a lot, you're a student, we're to bring a gun together for like for a student presentation. They get permission from their principal to bring that gun to school. Yeah, I think that really happens, so it's just that first sentence of other individuals. We have to give permission, too much to have to give permission, but I don't think we really need that other one in there to encourage people bring. We're trying to find who's still wanting to bring it there, so I'm gonna use school. And the last one, this one goes back to what he had to share with Title Nine. We did not have a policy on pregnant students, this is new, like because of Title Nine. The reason being now the student is um is pregnant in high school. But in high school, we can reach out to the student and just say, hey, what do you need? Um how can we support you in all these different measures, so that this policy here states.
So just a small thing, oh, there's a cap on my wish, it's small. It's all right. It's the rights. Just here in the description.
Oh, got it, right, it's the right, thank you. There is the five minutes.
Any questions on the five minutes series? This question to answer through the second reading, um at the next meeting?
Yes.
And I approve.
Correct.
Okay, no question required, moving on, um to the next word of business is that junior army chain order.
So, yes, so you'll see there are two numbers here, uh you scroll through it, there's two different situations with nurse builders. Uh basically what happened was, when we read in the old main office. And we read in the family consumer science room. By doing those and having the revisions that would open up the ceiling, they realized that the wall was not divided coke. So the hallway was is built this way, but once you open something up, you need to now follow code. So we had to put a sprinkler system all the way down the entire main hallway, the new addition is sprinkler. We do that section there. Now, we could have put this originally into our contingency, which we had thirty-three thousand dollars left. And you'll see that this is for about. Thank you. And the other one is now the second for forty-eight, so there's two of them actually. What is for family consumer science, and what's for the hallway C of those two that we're just speaking of? By putting those two together, we thought this is paying out of your general fund of this. We have thirty-three thousand dollars contingency, if that will still be left, it offsets this, but at least we're getting first builders paid. Um and just if something else came up, we'd still have thirty-three thousand dollars contingency, so we're just paying for it, doing the change order instead. So, uh two votes, one change one.
Any questions? Now I'll take a motion. I have four in the amount of increase of eighteen thousand seven hundred ninety dollars forty cents. For the junior high sprinkler system in the F C S room and administration office. What Mr. Wheeler, second time this term, Paris, that overproof Bruce Butler changer zero five four. The amount of increase of eighteen thousand seven hundred ninety dollars and forty percent for the junior high. Sprinkler system in the family and consumer science room and administration office, roll club, please, this is how.
Mister Angers.
Yeah.
Mrs. Brockman, is this the Cammerer?
Yes.
Mrs. Cuckle?
Yes.
Mrs. Wheeler?
Yes.
And Dr. Wapley?
Yes. Now, taking the second change order. The board approved first builders change order number zero five four.
It should be zero five six.
Zero five six, and the amount of an increase of forty-eight thousand eight hundred ninety-six dollars ninety-one cents. For the junior high sprinkler system existing in the hallway.
What's your, Mr. Cammerer? Second, I've brought me that the board approved boost builders change order. Numbers zero five six in the amount of an increase of forty-eight thousand. Eight hundred eighty-six dollars ninety-one cents within junior high. Sprinkler system in the I said, in the existing main hallway, roll club, please, this is how.
Mister Angers?
Yes.
Mrs. Brock?
Yes.
Mister Cammerer?
Yes.
Mrs. Cuckle?
Yes.
Mrs. Wheeler?
Yes.
Dr. Wapley?
Yes. All right, and then we also have um another uh change order. As well, right, I for the phase one, if you play on this joint, Mr. Street.
Correct, so the first one is an act of thirty-nine thousand five eighty-seven all American concrete, what this was for. Would we originally pick up the equipment they had given us as their quote, or as their quote, their ideas? We added some different, like we added a different tour, we added some different equipment. It was all settled done, but we added, cost those thirty-one thousand five eighty-seven over the quote. For what they had so originally selected, we just upgraded a couple of things, and the project sort of also, and this is what we wanted to buy. Um that one there, so it's just great.
Okay, well, any questions? I'll take a motion.
Mark with the all American concrete change order number one. Thirty-eight thousand five hundred eighty-seven dollars for the elementary project.
What's your second thought? Mister Harris, that the board approved the all American concrete, they created a change order number one, and the amount of an increase of thirty-nine thousand five hundred eighty-seven dollars. For the elementary playground project, roll up, please, this is how.
Mister Angers?
Yeah.
Mister Brock?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
Mrs. Cuckle?
Yes.
Mrs. Wheeler?
Yes.
Dr. Wapley?
Yes, and we finally took a decrease.
But when they add two reads in the subway, where the trucks drove at Bridgeview, where the the concrete work at Roberdale Heights. Um it actually came under bid price, which was nice to see, so there's a new savings on that there. So, take a walk, if anybody has any questions?
The question, the the two things here for the playgrounds, uh can change how we approach things too.
Great question, so we just met last week, and they have given us their. Um proposals, their ideas, and we are still revising stage. Because it probably came in about four hundred thousand dollars higher than I thought it was gonna come in. So we're working through right now, um what does that look like? Maybe reduce some equipment or some of the, reduce some of the square footage of rubberized surface. So we're looking in there doing some options right now.
Comparable to what we had done this first round, or they think they're increasing price?
No, I think it's all re-comparable, yes, since when they came back, um I think some of the equipment might be a little bit more than we need potentially. And when you look at the square foot of Forest Grove, and we put it for that, all the p-gravel. We could potentially shrink by fifteen, twenty feet and and reduce all the board surface. So some of the things we're looking at right now, but what our whole statement that was, when you look at Roosevelt's Pleasant View and Bridgefield. Try to make the other three comparable, so you see a lot of the playground equipment is the same. It just came from what I originally thought, based upon. Being newer equipment and writing up needing as much, maybe I was just off on that one, so we'll pare that out.
Are you changing your equipment at Forest Grove and hoping?
Yes, so some things we get, like for example, this rope climb is there ten feet high, or so, they ensure each school has one of those.
So they're primarily keep.
They primarily keep the same, but they did come back with some options to add some stuff as well, because some of the eight days, the exclusive components, but. They did come back with some other nits and type options there too, so that's what we're going through. Yeah, but we look at the E T O, we try to keep as similar as possible.
Other question?
Right, I'll take a motion.
To the board approved all American concrete ink change order number one, the amount of a decrease of four thousand sixty-eight dollars for the elementary playground project.
What's your, I'm just, Mr. Harris, the board approved all American concrete incorporated change order number one. We are a decrease of four thousand sixteen dollars for the elementary playground project, roll up, please, uh, tell me.
Mister Angers?
Yeah.
Mister Brockman?
Yes.
Mister Cammerer?
Yes.
Mrs. Cuckle?
Yes.
Mrs. Wheeler?
Yes.
Dr. Wapley?
Uh yes, and now, so monthly financial reports for June.
All right, so if you have any board supplemental information, um. June two thousand twenty-four monthly financial reports, which of course June is the end of our fiscal year. Uh and then also your board supplemental information was a document that I prepared. That just kind of summarizes some of the highlights of the June two thousand twenty-four month monthly financial reports. Um since it is the last month of the fiscal year. As a reminder, our auditors were here in early September. Finishing up their work right before we had to certify our financial report to the state on September fifteenth. So we always wait until that is done before we present the June monthly financial report, so that's why we're. Uh presenting in tonight's board meeting. Uh at our next board meeting, we will present the July two thousand twenty-four and the August two thousand twenty-four monthly financial reports. So, the June two thousand twenty-four monthly financial report. Again, this is in your board deck, and I'm not gonna go through necessarily everything that I have on the sheet in your board deck. And I'm just gonna, I'm gonna go through the highlights, in the general fund, there's four main. Uh ratios or economic, economic indicators that are very important for school districts in Iowa. The first one is your fund balance, how your fund balance in the in the general fund is doing. The second one is the cash balance, how the cash balance is going um going from year to year. The third one is the unspent carryover, the total unspent carryover in the district. And then the fourth one is the district solvency ratio, those are the four main things that we look at. When um looking at the financial buildings, the general, general fund, all four of those. Things, all all four of those indicators were favorable for us during the two thousand twenty-three, twenty-four fiscal year. The fund balance went up, the cash balance went up, the unspent carryover in the district went up. Followed by similar amounts, uh between two and three million dollars for each of those. And um the financial solvency ratio in the district also went up last year. It went up from seventeen point zero eight percent at the end of the two thousand twenty-two, twenty-three fiscal year. To, for the first time, our solvency ratio was a little bit over twenty percent, twenty point two six percent. At the end of the uh two two thousand twenty-three, twenty-four fiscal year. So, and all of those were favorable increases for the general fund. Why did all those go up by a favorable amount? Well, some of the main reasons for that are. Our revenue in the general fund for the twenty-three, twenty-four fiscal year went up seven point one percent. From the previous year, but our expenditures in the general fund for the last fiscal year. Only went up by three point one percent of the previous fiscal year. Some reasons that the revenue went up by seven point one percent of the general fund include. We did receive more money in property taxes and from the state, because um our enrollment increase. For the two thousand twenty-three, twenty-four budget year, which would have been based on our enrollment, that was taken on October first, two thousand twenty-two. We were out by a hundred and thirty-three point two students at that time on our certified enrollment. So that was part of the reason for the big, um significant increase in revenue in the general fund. Also, you know, state, except the nominal state aid that year, three percent. So your budget and revenue automatically goes up, and the states have supplemental state aid of that percentage. We also had quite a bit higher interest rates, interest rates on money that we invested or have in our deposit accounts. Was quite a bit higher than the two thousand twenty-three, twenty-four year than it was in two thousand twenty-two, twenty-three. Um and also, another thing that helped with um the increase in revenue is. During the two thousand twenty-three, twenty-four year, we levy for the maximum amount that we are allowed to levy for. In cash reserve, in the cash reserve, in the general fund. So that was the other main reason that our revenues went up by seven point one percent in the general fund. And again, the reason that we levy for the maximum amount of cash reserves is we're, we're trying to continue to narrow that gap between. What fund balance, funded cash balance are in the general fund, and what our total unspent carryover is in the general fund. Because right now, we have more unspent spending authority or unspent carryover each year, at the end of each year in the general fund. Than we do have in cash and fund, so that's why we've been trying to utilize the cash reserve levy to get to narrow that gap between the two. The main reasons for the relatively modest increase in expenditures compared to the increase in revenues in the general fund include. There was a decrease in the amount of expenditures that we had last fiscal year. For S R three expenditures, because we've actually spent a lot of S R three money. That's the um COVID um relief money that we're getting over the past. That's the um COVID um relief money that we're getting over the past several years. Well, we had spent all that money in the two thousand twenty two, twenty three fiscal year. So there's no, no S R three money to spend in the twenty three, twenty four fiscal year, so there were the decrease. In the amount of expenditures for that. We also had a significant decrease in our natural gas and electricity expenditures during the two thousand twenty three, twenty four year. We, you know, locked in our natural gas prices each year. To try to minimize the amount that um that might go up each year, so that that is affecting our natural. Gas um decreases for the year. I was a little bit surprised that our electricity expenditure went up or down, should say during the year, especially with the. Construction projects and stuff, we did actually have a fairly significant decrease in our electricity expenditures for the year. Other areas that we had the increase in the general fund were building and repair maintenance supplies that were paid for out of the. General fund as opposed to capital, and then also, you may recall. There was a two year period where we were paying for a lot of our technology purchases out of the general fund. In order to give us a little more um money available in our public fund. For catching up with like boiler replacements and um roof replacements and. Uh things like that, well. Last year, we went down to paying for those out of the public fund, rep now the general fund, so. There was a decrease in the amount of those things. In the general fund this year for that. If you take all those things into consideration, that's why the expenditures in the general fund went up three point one percent last year. Well, revenue in the general fund last year went up seven point one percent. So again, because the revenues went up more than the expenditures, that's why we had increases. In our fund balance, cash balance, unspent carryover and. Um solvency ratio here at the general fund.
Any questions? I've seen that.
I didn't actually get the. Somebody make sure that it's in the packet.
Yeah, all of it's not in. We're missing that. And if you either have the proper documents and that, she can have there the other financial parts.
But actually, question.
Alright, so my question is, so your two fifths your five minutes gotta drop, right, so. Is it reasonable to assume or is it possible it's gonna also drop? Uh with this again next year? It's it's possible, it depends on a lot of expenditure, a lot of factors, but. End up suddenly having negotiations and. What health insurance and those kind of things do for next year. But if the fact that enrollment is going down. Has gone down, certified at home, that. Will definitely be a factor that. Any other?
I will get those documents to you tonight, so you have those. Yeah. So I need Debbie. Well, that was. Yeah, there's another folder, there's multiple folders. They weren't in one, which uploaded a year, so. I'll get that. My bad.
Alright, well, back to it. Uh so the other focus now is, since you don't have any air board information, you do want to make sure what is on the screen here. The the fund balance in the management fund also increased during the year by four hundred and twenty five thousand six hundred and fifty eight dollars. The main reasons for the increase in the management firm fund. Were that the district continues to attune to levy enough management fund dollars. To fund the expected significant increases in property li- liability insurance coverage. And to fund predicted future of the retirement benefits that would be coming over the next few years. Uh you you may recall, we had a, well, it's gonna be about a twenty five percent or so increase in our property and. Liability insurance this year, we ended up. Buying down the deductible on that uh. Kind of just throw that up a little bit, but we still had a pretty significant increase on the insurance property liability this year. Um so again, that's why, one of the big reasons why, trying to increase the amount we're levying in the management fund. Also, another reason for the significant increase of our management fund fund balance was the. Same reason I attended the general fund, higher interest rates, we're earning more money than we did a year ago. Interest income. The other funds, um that we have, the capital fund, we had us. Pretty much broke even, just a small increase in the fund balance in the capital fund at one thousand nine hundred ninety three dollars. The capital projects fund increased by twelve million ninety nine thousand and twenty six dollars during the twenty three. Fiscal year. Of course, the main reason for the big increase in that fund balance was that. The new issuance that we did last year, I think it was last October or so. About twenty seven million one hundred eighty thousand dollars in sales tax revenue. To help pay for the high school building condition that um is going on right now. Uh and of course, we continue to have expenditures out of the capital projects fund. To pay for the projects that are already going on at Forest Grove and the junior high. So that's why. Though we borrowed twenty seven million dollars, our fund balance didn't go up to twenty seven million dollars, because we also had expenditures coming out of there for. The junior high and Forest Grove projects plus. Right towards the end of fiscal year, so you have some expenditures for the high school project. The debt service fund, that fund balance for the June thirtieth, two thousand twenty four year. Was a little bit over two point six million dollars, the debt service fund. Collects the money from the public fund and the capital projects fund. To pay the principal and interest payments and all the hard money in the district, and that's what that fund balance represents. The next fund is the nutrition fund. The main things I would can point out of the nutrition fund, as you can see here. Is the food sales revenue in the nutrition fund. Increased by two and a half percent during the two thousand twenty three, twenty four fiscal year. So about just hundred fifty six thousand dollar increases in food sales in the nutrition fund during the year. Federal rate expense decreased by two hundred thirty two thousand, well over two hundred thirty two thousand dollars. For seventeen point four percent during the twenty three, twenty four fiscal year. The overall fund balance in the nutrition fund increased by just under three hundred seventy eight thousand dollars. Or nineteen point seven percent during the two thousand twenty three, twenty four fiscal year. The next fund is the student uh construction fund, that is the fund. That is being used to account for the building of the airplane. The fund balance at the end of June thirtieth, two thousand twenty four for that fund is eighty five thousand two hundred twenty one dollars. There really wasn't a whole lot of change from the previous year, I think the previous year, the fund balance in there was. Eighty four thousand dollars, I think there was a very small increase in the fund balance. And then that funds during the year. Uh and the internal service fund is the fund that accounts for our self funded health insurance. And our self funded dental insurance plans. Uh and we had a two point six percent increase. In the health insurance claims and administration fees related to our health insurance plan during the fiscal year. We had a one point nine percent increase in the amount of claims and administration fees. For dental during the year. Overall, fund balance in the internal service fund increased by a little over three three hundred twenty thousand dollars. Or seven point six percent during the two thousand twenty three, twenty four fiscal year. And as a reminder, as as always, it should be noted that our fund balance in the internal service fund. Or also known as the insurance reserve still remains above the state required minimum balances there. And then the last fund, the student activities fund. We had a small increase also in our student activities fund balance for the year. They went up to eight thousand four hundred twenty nine dollars, one point one percent during the twenty three, twenty four fiscal year. So that is my summary of the June two thousand twenty four financial uh reports. Again, the auditors are working on the actual audit report right now, we hope to be bringing that to you. Um um probably either one of the November board meetings or the latest. More meeting in December. Which will be based on a lot of the same information that's out here tonight, but. Uh I just to bring that to you also, there's other information in the audit report.
Is that curiosity completely unrelated to the. Us, but what is the open enrollment schedule for the district? Allow folks to enroll or change and all that, so assuming it's not the same. The same schedule.
Yeah, we have an open enrollment period each year on the health insurance that runs usually, I think, from April fifteenth to May fifteenth. When people can open enrollment, change their averages or start rich.
When you go out to negotiate benefits or uh with with the vendors that you use? When does that typically take place?
In in. The February and March, right, hey? Cause I get a plan here, start July first, so our fiscal year. So yeah, we usually start, well, we usually get our renewal information in. January, so which January?
Do you know or do you have the information from your vendors on the. Costs associated with our plans and usage, is it? Like, how does it compare to? That door to the upper, our insurance, costs about the same, so like plans? Get information like that from?
I would not go to answer that question, I'd be impressed that one.
No. We want to look at that per employee. No, because we have a heck of more employees.
Yeah, I'm just wondering if, because if you go back up a little bit, it's uh your. In your claim insurance claims and administrative fees increased by a hundred and fifty six thousand dollars, are we paying more? For our administrative fees to our vendors as compared to some of our kind of. Here districts, um do we have the right vendors plates? And what's driving that increase in claim?
I could probably ask true north that question because. Yeah, I work in North, North side of that.
Oh yeah, I would like to share information with you.
Yeah, yeah, and we have a health insurance committee in the district that meets for the three, three star council year. We do review. Not necessarily the information compared to other districts, but. Always be our last news on cost, how do you reduce our costs, what are our options? For example, the newest one now is we have to get out to families to be. First, our medications from Canada. It's over a high cost, but it's much cheaper doing that, which is here, they'll send a big house. So those are the kind of work now.
Uh do, there's several others on prescription side of our medical side that we have pulled yet, so. I asked him to look at that before our next meeting to see if he that be, I'll say these remakes. You know, then there's more drug administrators. And then international one is huge, and I think it's making sure that people recognize that exactly the same that you're getting. It just doesn't have all the helmet costs attached to it, and it's out of the savings for us as a district. If we can move people to those types of programs, so yeah, I plan to get. For oh a lot of things that we're going to look at and bring back to the table for us, so.
Some, if you look across the nation, those are the biggest costs of life, those recipes is because of. Medication, the pharmacy, P M's and all of that stuff that's happening itself, there's. I know they're trying, they're trying to bring some rules in Congress regarding, you know, the federal law to try and limit it, but it hasn't happened yet.
Yeah, and the other thing you dream that I asked him, that was a separation for our medical expenses for specialty drugs versus actual medical. Because that could be a huge portion of what our medical expenses are, because they follow the medical persons for us. Where we can see those those costs um associated in that bucket as well.
Yeah, I'm, there's a number of time I have, but it's over half a million for sure that because of the way our. Um employees years their insurance and took advantage of, we split health reserve last year. So it's really good to see from pharmacy air from health insurance. You know, going to document demand versus going emergency room. Things like that. Buy chairs.
Can't, sorry.
Oh, great question.
We have a question for Mike. Alright, um there are questions, I will take. What is this conference, I'm Mr. Brockman, this is the monthly financial report.
Mr. Cammerer?
Yes.
Mr. Cuckle? Yes. Mr. Walter? Yes.
Yes. So um for all the future days, we have. October twenty eighth is our next presentation two weeks from today at six P M. And we have another one at eleven, uh at six P M as well.
I just, um, I've been around with you on each side. These are the annual awards, there are things that you can do to gain points via I S B, if you do a webinar, you can go to the next lieutenant conference. Our conference again begins November twentieth, twenty first, twenty second. Has has Debbie reached out to you guys about who is attending? And who is planning to go?
Catherine. And Adrian.
Okay, good. So we'll go through logistics of when you guys will meet up, what it looks like, it'll be a day early. Yeah, yes.
Right.
Go to.
Is there anything else?